We're gonna re- uh, call to order the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at five-thirty. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Item three A, Mr. Stewart.
One item for closed session. This is the property at one-six-eight-two-four Bellflower Boulevard. I negotiate with myself and Martin Howard, gardening and LLC. And under discussion today is price in terms of payment.
Okay, just the one item. Any recusals or conflicts? Not seeing any? Okay, we're going to recess to closed session. All right, we're gonna reconvene the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM, for open session. And there was no reportable action tonight in closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Okay, we may have everybody rise at this time. We're gonna have the invocation led by myself and the pledge allegiance by PJ Milano, the Director of Parks and Rec. Oh, Lord, please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. Also, may you lend your wisdom to find solutions for the issues that come before us. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve the way of life. We ask for your protection and blessings on our military men and women, and may they always return safely to their families. In your name, amen.
Amen. Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Okay, city council announcements, I'll start. In two thousand sixteen, the voters approved the city's transaction for a water service- water services for the- for California American Water Company. After six years, the city is pleased to inform its water customers that this has finally happened. On November first, two thousand twenty-two, California American Water became the new water provider. It has been in the city's ple- pleasure to provide water in proportions of our community in Bellflower. California American Water has long history of providing water service in other communities neighboring Bellflower, and it brings an additional level of expertise called for these complex times, along with the technology and wherewithal needed to provide clean potable water. Their commitment to- to their customers is safety and environmental protection made them best the choice to provide the service to our community. You may reach out by phone at six-one-nine-eight-eight-five-seven-zero-three-one, or via email at wel- welcome@amwater.com with any questions you may have. This is the Bellflower Municipal Water System that the voters approved years ago to sell, and this is the company that we sold it. And finally, it's- it's a done deal. And now we can move on. Okay, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. California has several recycling mandates that apply to multifamily and commercial properties, including food scrap and landscape waste recycling requirements of Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three. SB thirteen-eighty-three requires all commercial customers and multifamily properties to participate in an organic material collection program as of January first, two thousand twenty-two. CRNR Environmental Services in the city of Bellflower launched a food scrap and landscape recycling program that conveniently collects organic waste materials from multifamily and commercial properties and transports them to a composting facility. Diverting organic materials from landfills help reduce negative environmental impacts created by greenhouse gas emissions. To establish this required recycling services now, please call CRNR Environmental Services at five-six-two-nine-four-four-four-seven-one-six, or email bellflower-recycles@crmail.com. For more information on SB thirteen-eighty-three and additional state requirements, please That's all, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santinas. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The sanitation district and the Department of Public Works will be hosting the Too Toxic to Trash Drive-Thru Collection Event that will be held Saturday, December the third, from nine to three at Sims Park at one-six-six-one-four Clark Avenue. The Household Hazard Waste Collection Program gives Los Angeles County residents a legal and cost-free way to dispose of unwanted household chemicals that cannot be disposed of in a regular trash. Here's what you can bring. You can bring motor oil, antifreeze, paint, paint thinner, turpentine, cleaners with acid or lye, pesticides, herbicides, car batteries, household batteries, old computers, television sets, used needles, yeah, okay, expired pharmaceuticals, and mercury thermometers. Now, that's what you can bring. You can't bring hatchets. No, that's just for you. No, no. Please do not bring explosives, ammunition, radioactive materials, old tires, white goods such as washers, dryers, or fridges, or air conditioners. Waste from businesses will not be accepted either. Be sure to bring the items in a sturdy box, preferably in the original labeled container. So that way, they can determine what it is that's in the box, I suppose. Be prepared to leave your containers, and do not mix products together. For more details on this event, call one-eight-hundred-two-three-eight-zero-one-seven-three. That was one of my more fun announcements that I've had over the years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What was your top waste?
Yeah, well, you know, the thing, needles. I don't know what, I guess my wife's gonna give up sewing or something, so.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will talk about bringing something better here.
All right.
Okay, the Bellflower Volunteer Center is- is coordinating the holiday food and toy drive for our local families in need. For Christmas, they are seeking canned goods, gift cards, and gifts for children. Gifts can be dropped off at the volunteer center or purchased online using, look at Amazon wishlist. Okay, monetary donations are always welcome and appreciated during this time of year as well. Okay, donations are due by November thirtieth. For more information, contact five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four at extension two-three-three-one, or email mnavarro@bellflower.org. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. This holiday season, show your holiday spirit by decorating the outside of your home and competing in the City of Bellflower's Holiday Home Decoration Contest. Nominations are now open, and all entries must submit and be received by four PM on Thursday, December the first. The contest committee will be judging nomination- or nominated properties the week of December fifth. The winning homes will be recognized with a lawn sign and certificates of recog- uh, recognition from the mayor and the city council. Submit your nomination online at www.tinyurl.com/bhhd2022. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. All right, we have a presentation for National Family Court Awareness Month. Next, I'd like to invite Sandy Ross from the California Protective Parents Association up here to the presentation riser, and we'll be presenting Sandy with a proclamation declaring November twenty-two Family Court Awareness Month.
I'm gonna protect against him.
Yeah. What's fun, what? Want not to bring?
All right, on behalf of the Bellflower City Council and the City of Bellflower, we like to present you with this proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on importance of- of impr- impractically-based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse. And also, whereas the mission of the FM- FCAMC, that's a lot, yeah, is to increase awareness and importance in the usually scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety effectiveness, therapeutic value. And whereas it conservatively estimated that fifty-eight thousand US children annually are being court ordered to- into unsupervised visitations with an abusive parent. And therefore, I, Ray Dutton, and the mayor of city Bell- as a mayor of city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim that November twenty-two is Family Court Awareness Month, and I encourage all the residents to support and to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor the value and lives of the children. So Sandy, we would like to thank you for coming out tonight and accepting the proclamation on our behalf. And would you like to say a few words? Sure.
Thank you. First, I would like to, thank you. I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for- for your support and council members in the city as well. I come to you today as a- as a child safety advocate. We have some serious child safety issues in the family court system. The purpose of why I'm here today is to shine a light on the need for education. There's some pretty startling statistics. In fact, last year, November was Family Court Awareness Month. Between last year and this year, ten more California children have been murdered in the context of this system. So I'm here today for that and fighting for that cause. You'd be really surprised to know that throughout the country, the judges aren't sitting on the bench, and this is not disrespectful to the bench officials, but they're on the bench without needed training for cases that they're ruling on every single day. In California, it's the same. There's no real significant mandated training on childhood trauma, childhood emotional, sexual, course of control, domestic violence, and it's- it's costing lives, and- and that's why we're here. So I appreciate it. Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is public comments. This is a time set aside for, I'm sorry, this is a time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You will be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, anybody wishing to speak on a non-agenda item? This is where you come up to the podium and discuss anything you'd like. Come on down. Yeah, sign in, and then as soon as you know that, just state your name in the microphone for the minutes, and enjoy yourself at the podium.
My name is Darlene Palacios. I was here a few weeks ago, or a few months ago, about people being killed and injured on my intersection of Rose Street and Clark Avenue. And I was just wondering what's the status of that and to give you an update on where we are, because I don't know what the status is of it. But at this time of the year, we have another problem with the safety of the pedestrians and the people in the assisted living next to me is that shopping, holiday shopping. At this time of year, what happens is that people are speeding. We're on the street, the mall. The mall is on- between Lakewood and Clark. So we are like in direct line of the mall, and everybody's shopping this time of the year. So you have not only the safety issue of the rest of the year, but the safety issue of the holiday season. So that's what we're facing right now, and I'm seeing that that's becoming where people are racing up and down the street to get to the mall. But there's another issue that I'm concerned about, the water restrictions. It had come to my attention lately that there's water restrictions, but it's all on the honor system, and there is no such thing as enforcement. I've reported it. The place where I live, they flood the place. It causes certain problems. And there's no enforcement. It's all on the honor system, and apparently, people know that. So they just flooding the place, watering it, whatever they want to do, whatever they want to do, two feet of water, the river, you know. Where I live is a real problem. They're watering where there are no plants. They're watering the parking lot. They're watering the back patio. I'm not sure why they're watering all these things. They're watering the building, the fence, and there's no enforcement. I notified code enforcement. They don't do anything. The water company, they said there's nothing they can do about private property, and I emailed several times to savewater.ca.gov, and nothing happened. Anyway, thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to do this.
Yeah, and it's, I believe it's a state thing that they, but there's no enforcement.
I know. I didn't realize that until right now. There is no enforcement, and people know that, and there are people who'll do the right thing, and then there are more people that won't do the right thing.
What I've heard on- on that there is a reduction in water use.
Not where I live.
Though I get that, but I mean, I've heard that on like talk radios and stuff in the news and stuff like that. They say it, but I don't see no records. I can't answer you on that, I'm sorry. It's a state thing.
Yeah, I send them pictures. I send them, I'm tech challenged, but I do send them pictures, you know? Six inches of water in the rip- in the planter. They've watered a six-foot fence. They're watering the building. I mean, how much water do we need? They're watering where there are no plants? Why are we watering? It is creating an issue, which I'm not going to bring up.
Back to your, I believe you spoke to Joel Hockman. Did he get your contact information?
I spoke to Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we, I followed up, Mr. Mayor, after Mr. Darlene presented the first time around, and I believe staff may have a little bit more of a report now regarding the Rose and Clark, and what the idea is at this point in time. I'll let Mr.
Let the recial address that.
Okay, Darlene, this gentleman here is gonna address at the mi- just step aside of the podium there. He'll.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, yeah, just real quick, um, at both Clark and Rose, as well as Clark and Ramona, we're doing some additional painting. So currently, what you have is just the- the two lines that represent a crosswalk. We're doing the hatching in the middle of it, bringing it to more attention to the pedestrian or to the drivers. We're also painting shark's teeth, which is a, you know, an inverted triangle, warning drivers as they're approaching to the, uh, to the crosswalk locations. We had a tree that was partially blocking one of the signs for northbound. Uh, we removed that tree last week. We've ordered additional signage to be mounted for drivers as well as signage for pedestrians, because there's only one crosswalk at those intersections, and a lot of people won't go to the one side of the street to actually use the crosswalk. They'll go where there's no crosswalk at all. So we're installing the signage there as well, saying no pedestrian crossing, directing them to where the crosswalk is. So a lot of those are in- in play right now, and the striping should be completed probably in the next week or so. We have to hire a striping contractor to come on out. We wait until we have several projects, kind of get our bang for the buck on the contract. But he'll be out here in the next couple of weeks to get that work done for us.
All right, thank you. Yeah, oh yeah.
The crosswalk is on the north- south side of the street where we don't need it. We need the crosswalk on the other side of the street. Uh, the Brightview Nursing Home is on this side. It's on the north side, and a lot of those people are disabled. So for, it's not that they don't, they're not- not walking to the crosswalk. They have a hard enough time going from here to there, let alone going from here to there to there to there.
I believe there's a traffic engineer that's-
Yeah.
-scientifically puts crosswalks where there is, but I guess we could have him look at it and make sure nothing's changed.
Not that, you know, the man that was killed recently on September ninth, and then the other lady a few years ago that was killed. Um, one was killed by a car. On September fourth, the man was killed by a car going south. But the other lady, I believe, was killed by a person going north. But they were all on the north side of the street. Both incidents happened. These are just the recent things, not all past issues and all the other people who have been hit and injured, but not killed. So it's, the issue is on the north side of the street, not the south side of the street, really. So, um, the place where we need the crosswalk and stuff is-
I, yeah, I get, I get that, I understand, but-
It's on the north side.
There's people that are professionals that decide that, it's not us.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, Bellflower. Let me just sign in really quick. Good evening, Bellflower. My name is Eden. I'm president of the Miss Bellflower Pageant. Um, that is an independent nonprofit organization that focuses on volunteerism. We just had a pageant, um, October twenty-second at the Bellflower's, woo, sorry about that, sorry. Took a paper clip with me. Um, a Bellflower Civic Center, and, uh, we had a really great time. We were able to crown five young ladies to be on the Miss Bellflower Pageant Royal Court for two thousand twenty-two. They are here today. They would just like to introduce themselves.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members and community. My name is Narai, and I'm your two thousand twenty-two Miss Bellflower Queen.
Good evening, Bellflower and council members. My name is Eliana Hernandez, and I am your Miss Team Bellflower Queen of two thousand twenty-two.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Bellflower. My name is Ally Ramirez, and I am the Miss Bellflower Princess of two thousand twenty-two.
Great. Thank you, young ladies, for coming up and introducing yourselves. Anybody else wishing to come forward and discuss anything that's not on the agenda? Not seeing any, we'll move on. Item eleven-eight, Mr. Stewart?
This is a public hearing. It's consideration possible action induct public hearing to consider adopting Resolution number twenty-two-dash-six-three. A resolution authorizes the city manager to amend FY two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three operating budget, execute purchase and sale agreement filed number nine-six-three in a form approved by the city attorney with the nineteen-ninety-one Jacqueline S. Connolly revocable living trust for the purchase of real property located at nine-eight-one-eight Artesia Boulevard. And I believe Mr. Dalanga has a staff report for you.
Okay, before we start there, I think I'm the only one that has a recusal. I have to recuse myself in this because I own property interest within five hundred feet of this location, so I'm gonna step out and turn this over to Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas.
All right, let the record reflect that Mayor Dutton is recused on this item eleven-eight. Mr. Dalanga, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. Uh, in late two thousand twenty-one, the Public Works Department contacted the Connolly Trust to discuss incorporating portions of its property at ninety-eight-eighteen Artesia Boulevard in the parking lot repaving project for the adjacent city-owned parking lot. The property is located just east of Bellflower Boulevard at ninety-eight-eighteen Artesia Boulevard and consists of a five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-eight-square-foot commercial building on a fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-one-square-foot parcel. In addition, there is a purchase option agreement affecting the adjacent city-owned parking lot. Since that time, the Connolly Trust has offered to sell the property to the city, including the purchase option agreement, for one-point-two-million dollars. A review of the location and economic development potential of the property demonstrates that it will definitely contribute to the commercial vitality of that area. Additionally, the city obtained an appraisal report, which supports the fair market value purchase price of one-point-two-million dollars. After acquiring the property, staff proposes to continue leasing the property to the current commercial tenant, Shoe Kingdom, and construct parking lot and driveway improvements to improve drainage and access to the adjacent city-owned public parking lot. All proceeds from the lease will be deposited into the general fund. Furthermore, additional city council consideration in the future is desirable to determine the long-term development of the property. Pursuant to Government Code Section five-two-two-zero-one, a summary report was prepared and made part of the agenda packet for this item describing the salient points of the agreement. Staff recommends the city council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution number twenty-two-dash-sixty-three, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three operating budget to allocate funds for the property purchase and authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase and sale agreement in a form approved by the city attorney, or alternatively, discuss and take another action related to this item. That completes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dalanga, for your presentation. Ju- just for the viewing public, this property is very close to the existing Dunkin' Donuts and Wingstop on the south side of Artesia, just east of Bellflower Boulevard. All right, any- any question for Mr. Dalanga?
No questions.
No questions, all right. All right, what action do we need to take tonight?
Move to public, open, yeah, public hearing?
All right. Uh, motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, to open a public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this agenda item?
No. Regular meeting. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Hamada, to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. hearing without objection, that will be the order. All right, gentlemen. This is going so fast.
Not hard to spend a million dollars, is it?
1.2.
All right, thank you.
Well, just for your information, um, Councilmember Coop and I were a member of the subcommittee, so we're very familiar with this transaction. Uh, we negotiated with the seller, so we are very, very knowledgeable about this purchase. All right, with that.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second. Okay, the motion is, uh, adopt resolution number 22 dash 63. A resolution authorizing the city manager to amend, uh, FY 2022, two, dash, two, three, operating budget and executive, execute purchase and sale agreement filed nine six three in a form approved by the city attorney with, uh, 1991 Ja- Jacqueline S. Connolly Revocable Trust for the purchase of real property located at 9818 Artesia Boulevard in the city of Bellflower.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Coop, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, uh, to adopt resolution number 22 dash 63 and other items and other things, other actions that need to be taken. All right, um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Aye. Motion carried.
Get the mayor back.
All right, that was easy.
Never seen a million dollars get spent so fast before.
A million, two.
Oh, excuse me.
Invested.
Yeah, invested, there we go. 11B, Mr. Stewart?
This is a consideration possible action induct, public hearing to adopt resolution number 22 dash 62. Resolution authorizing city manager to execute agreement filed number nine five nine in a form approved by the city attorney with Darts Corner LLC to lend funds for working startup capital and equipment acquisition at 17242 dash four four Downey Avenue. And Mr. Dalanga again has a staff report for you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As a refresher, the Small Business Micro Loan Program offers loans, uh, from 5,000 to 30,000 dollars for working or startup, startup capital, equipment machinery purchases, inventory purchases, and direct business expenses for Bellflower small businesses. These loans have terms of 10, 10 years and interest rates of prime rate plus 2%. The longer term helps applicants by providing smaller payments over an extended period of time and the interest rate over prime helps offset the increased risk often associated with startups and small business lending. Darts Corner LLC, owned by Tanya McMillan, has established Darts Lounge at 17242 Downey Avenue in the Bellflower Plaza Shopping Center at the northeast corner of Downey Avenue and Artesia Boulevard. Darts Corner is a bar lounge serving beer, wine, and wine cocktails with a primary focus on the game of darts. Business opened in June 2022 in the space formerly occupied by Enrique's Mexican Restaurant. On October 10th, 2022, after a public hearing, city council considered an application by Darts Corner for a small business micro loan pursuant to Chapter Five of the Business Assistance Plan and asked the applicant to correct and refine financial documents. Miss McMillan provided economic development staff with recent bank statements, actual revenue finger, figures, and costs of goods sold from her point-of-sale system for the July through October timeframe and worked with staff to update the cash flow projections and actual revenue spreadsheets, which are attached as part of the agenda packet. Major changes highlighted in yellow on the cash flow projection spreadsheet include the following, the following additions. Costs of goods sold based on June through August actuals, properly entering funds in beginning cash, including the use of personal funds as added cash infusion, adjusting food and beverage revenue to start at a lower amount, increase, uh, reductions in the supplies line item based on actual supply costs and eliminating of a cleaning service. Funds were also added in the ads promotion line item twice per year for paid social media boosts and advertising. The applicant also provided staff with an updated marketing plan. The application is opposing to use the proceeds of the loan to help pay for startup and working capital due to the loss of an investment partner. Staff has confirmed that the applicant has a five-year lease that commenced on November 1st, 2021, with a five-year option to extend. The lease also has annual consumer price index increases of 3% per year, and that has been included in the rent line item. Under the plan, the applicant is providing a personal guarantee and collateral for the loan composed of the new equipment purchased for the business. If approved, the loan payments will begin 60 days following the full disbursement of the loan, based on the published Wall Street Journal prime rate at the time of application, which was 5.5% in July of 2022, plus 2%, the loan payments will be 358 dollars and 32 cents at the total interest rate of 7.5%. Staff recommends the city council reopen the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 22 dash 62, or alternatively, discuss and take another action related to this item. That completes my presentation and staff is available for questions. Tanya McMillan, the owner of Darts Corner LLC, is also present and is also available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalanga. Any questions to, uh, Mr. Dalanga?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a quick one, Jim, this is probably just housekeeping, but, but, but in your staff report, under the fiscal impact, uh, the reference to the agreement filed nine five nine, it makes mention of building facade improvements was, was that something that's just-
That is a housekeeping item.
That's just-
That is a type-
I just wanted to be sure about that.
That would be micro loan instead, yes.
Yeah, yeah, all right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions for-
Mr. Sanchez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Jim, great presentation, thank you very much. Couple of questions, um, first off, can you elaborate a little bit more on the intent of the program and, um, what type of applicants you were originally expecting for this type of program?
Yeah, where the intent of this program is to help, uh, small businesses, startups, and, and businesses that are just underway that need that extra boost working capital to, to get going. Uh, it, that's why the loan amounts are varied from 5,000 to 30,000 dollars, because some businesses just need a, a small amount to get going or to cover some costs on a short, short-term basis. Uh, it's really just a, a helping hand.
And I think, I, I read somewhere, I can't, I can't, I couldn't find it where I read it, but the, the intent usually, can you s- talk a little bit more about the type of applicant and, um, the risk that usually comes with it? I think there was a, a term related to, you know, um, risk, right, there's risk involved usually.
Yes, uh, typically, small businesses and startups have a higher risk, uh, associated with their businesses and getting commercial, regular commercial lending. So, uh, this program requires, uh, that the applicant show us a rejection letter for, um, traditional lending and they, and Darts Corner has provided that, so this is kind of a last resort, uh, lending opportunity for small businesses and startups.
Perfect, thank you for sharing that. Um, and then can you, um, just for the knowledge of the public, how many funds did we allocate for this program?
This program is, we allocate approximately 221,000 dollars a year for our entire, uh, Business Assistance Plan, so this is part of that Business Assistance Plan budget.
Oh, so it's all bundled up?
Yes.
The entire, all our, all our programs?
Correct.
Okay, great, okay, I didn't know that, thank you for clarifying that. How many applicants have we had for this specific program?
Just this one.
Okay, so our first time going through this?
Correct.
Very good, all right, thank you, thank you for sharing that, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are my questions for now.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dalanga. Uh, can, can you, can you confirm again, um, how the money is going to be used for?
For this particular applicant?
Yes.
Might be worth asking the applicant during the public hearing, but it, I mentioned all the things that it could be used for in the staff reports, so working capital, uh, equipment purchases, uh, actual business expenses, inventory purchases, and the like.
Fair enough, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I have, you didn't have a question?
No.
Okay, my question is, uh, the, the equipment is, is going, the kitchen equipment's going to secure the loan?
Correct.
And that's based on receipts of new equipment?
Yes, uh, the applicant has provided me with receipts of the new equipment that she's purchased, I'll document that if this is approved and, and we'll do a UCC filing on that equipment.
Gotcha. And I would tend to believe that equipment is less than new if it's, say, foreclosed on for collateral or whatever it is, but the, the collateral of used equipment, because it's going to be used equipment or less, or not used very much equipment, let's say, um, it's got to be much less than the 30,000, I would think.
It, it-
I would guess 50 cents on the dollar.
I, I don't know, I don't know, we didn't do any research on that, I get that, I don't
mean to put you in a spot, I just wanted to make it known. That was my only question is, and if there's no questions, maybe we'll get Tanya up here and, uh, well, first we got to get, uh, the public, uh, hearing opened, right?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
May I say something?
Yes, oh yeah.
Congratulations to you ladies, you guys, you're poised, you're beautiful, the way that you presented yourselves, there are so many young ladies that can take a lot of notes from you ladies, so congratulations, you guys warm my heart. Okay.
Yeah, that's, they're special, aren't they? Okay, you, you heard a couple of questions that we, we had, you said, uh, I'll start with mine, there's, there's at least 30,000 in equipment, is there more than 30,000 in there?
There's probably more than-
More than that?
Um, I tried to find all of the receipts that, for all of the stuff that I've put in that business so far, excuse me, I'm so exhausted right now. Congratulations to Mayor Denton.
But yeah, your demeanor is a little, you feel, you look tired.
I am.
Okay. And, you know, compared to those a month ago when you were here, you were full of energy, you're the energy, energy bunny.
I usually am, just, yes.
Gotcha, no, I understand. And I think, uh, Mayor Protem Santinez had a question of what the money was for? Did you want to ask that? Okay.
As the que- the, as the question, uh, what's going to be the money used for?
So now, there will, you can include rent, back rent. The kitchen equipment that I need repaired or probably replaced is a hood for my stove and the vent, because they're not working, so I just need proper ventilation, and I've got some quotes on how much that would cost.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and, and thank you for working with Jim regarding this, uh, financial projection. Um, I, I'm just going to be asking question about the top level here in terms of generalities. Um, I, I was, I was surprised about the, um, the ratio of the cost of goods sold. Uh, I just did a quick math, uh, it ranges from 7.6 in year one, or year two, I mean, next year, and then 6.7% 24, and then 6.4% in 2025. So, it averaged about, I would say, 7%, would say, cost of goods sold. And so I was kind of surprised about the, um, the profit margin that you have, which is commendable, if you can make money out of that, make 90% profit on sales, uh, that is very commendable, so, but I recall that I have a friend who is, used to have an, a restaurant, and she told me that typically, um, the cost of goods sold is 25% of sales. So I was, I was very kind of uncomfortable with what I got here from the financial projection. So, this morning, I called our restaurant consultant, uh, Elizabeth O'Neill, to kind of, uh, gauge my, my estimate, so I asked her what is the general markup in terms of, um, food and beverage, and i- it was a shocker. She told me that minimum 30%, and especially with COVID, she said that, um, some restaurants are adjusting to either 40% these days. So, again, I was uncomfortable with the numbers I'm seeing, so I, I asked Mr. Dalanga if I can, if we have the actuals for July, August, September, and October, the four months. I look at the spreadsheet today real quick and I, I found out that, um, a lot of the items, the costs were not shown. There were sales, but there was no cost. So I think that's a big factor in terms of why the cost of goods sold is very low. Uh, is there, can you, can you confirm that, Mr. Dalanga?
Yeah, there were, there were sales shown for products, uh, several beers and wine coolers and stuff, but there were no, there were no purchases of those items.
There were no costs, so, that's why the, the, the cost of goods sold is very low. So, I'm just kind of doing some kind of rough estimate here, if we double the cost of goods sold, that's additional 10,000 dollars in terms of your expenses. And I really applaud you for putting on your own money into this business. I mean, you look at the, the cash infusion, over the next three years, you'll be putting in 100, $2,000 of your own money to run this business, and you're, and you will barely break even. So without your cash infusion, this venture is going to fail.
May I also, uh, explain to you that my kitchen is not open because I don't have ventilation or, and I've got to get that hood replaced. So, that is one of the reasons why I'm coming before you guys, asking for help, and that's why I came and asked you for help way back in July. So now, this is four months later, and I have depleted everything I have. I'm coming to my city, literally begging you for help. I've, I probably could have had that vent and that hood repaired or replaced two months ago and been producing and selling food. I have menus that I'm prepared to do, but I cannot do it yet. So, I'm just-
But, uh, you, you have to understand that we have the fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers.
Yes, I understand that.
It is not my money, it's not Mayor Denton's-
I know, it's my money, I pay taxes, yeah, I understand.
It's our money, it's our money.
I do.
So, I have to ask those kind of questions.
I, I, I hear you.
I hope you understand, because we're not, we're not here to rubber stamp the recommendation from staff. I tell you, I'll try, we were, I will not just rubber stamp the recommendation.
I wouldn't expect you to.
Okay, I have to ask questions, because I view this as, I'm investing my ta- my, my residence tax dollars, that's how I view it, okay? So, if I'm asking these questions, please bear with me.
Oh, no.
So that's one thing.
And I, and I am, and if I sound a little, whatever, I'm just so sorry, I'm like, so tired right now, you just don't know.
I, I want, I want to help you, I want to help you, but at the same time, I have our tax, taxpayers behind me saying, do the right thing.
May I also add that the taxpayers and the people who live around the shopping center where I'm located and the other businesses in the shopping center are so happy to have me there-
I understand, I understand.
-with my security. So, District Four, where I live in that community, I just feel like what I'm doing right now is giving back to the community, and I want the taxpayers to see exactly what's available to them in this city, and I'm starting to pick up traction, and I'm getting more people coming into Darts Corner, and as far as the business, the way that it's operating, I am actually doing very well, I'm just financially drained, and it can't move forward.
I have to tell you that, um, if you were not that passionate at the last meeting, I would have said no already. It's only your passion that keeps me looking into this, trying to help you. If I didn't see your passion at the last meeting, I would have said no.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to understand how the business is going to go from here on, that's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you for your honesty.
Okay. Uh, and the second thing is, um, what time is your shop open from?
4:00 PM to 2:00 AM.
Four to two, that's about, um, 12 hours?
I guess.
10, 10 hours, 10 hours, 10 hours. Ten hours, ten hours, ten hours. Uh, how, how many employees do you have?
Six.
Six employees? And how many are there, um, probably at any point in time? I'm sure that you, you have some kind of shifts.
I do. I'm there the whole time. Everybody else, they're in shifts, exactly.
Okay, six employees. So, so would you say at any point in time, there are two employ, other than you, there are two employees, at least two employees, always? And that brings me to the, the labor cost. Because at the minimum, if you're paying two employees at twenty hours a day for two employees, ten dollars, ten hours each at fifteen dollars, it's gonna be.
They're not there ten hours each?
No, at least two of you said two, there's at least two who are there for ten hours. If you, if you combine the hours of all, it's called full-time equivalent. So you, you have at least two employees who are there ten hours a day to combine all those six employees working. Am I doing it right?
Yes.
So your labor cost is gonna be a lot more than six thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
And that's where I'm coming from because again, I, I spoke with a consultant. She said one third typically is cost of goods sold, one third for labor and the rest, all others, including the profit. And I'm not seeing it here.
Okay.
So again, the bottom line here is without your cash infusion, i- it's not a viable business.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna?
Got a question.
Got a question for Ms. McMillan?
No, I mean, I don't have a question for, um, Ms. McMillan at this point in time, but I'll, I'll make some comments afterwards.
You mentioned the, okay, the hood and the, the vent, that wasn't existing because it was a restaurant prior, right?
Right.
And that was, and it's not working. Does it have to?
It's been empty for over four years.
Four years. Is it the kind that has the, the fire? Put out a fire and that has to be all updated and that's why it's so expensive?
Yeah, I actually had a deep clean twice. And, um, then the vent wasn't working. And so I actually called in, uh, part of the fire crew from Centos. And they came and did an inspection and told me exactly what the problem was. And then I had another referral come in. They basically told me the same thing. So.
Yeah, but the rest of the kitchen is okay. That's the, the only repair, because you mentioned repairs to the hood and the venting. Other than that, what was the estimate on that?
For the, it ranges between four and five thousand dollars, but the second quote that I got was much less. And it came from a referral from a fellow business colleague of mine. So like thirty-six hundred, thirty-eight hundred.
My other question is, is, is on the spreadsheet, you're infusing forty-three thousand dollars into the business. And I know you were, you did childcare. You still do that?
Yes.
So that's where the money is, your income from that?
Yes.
But that's a, that's a lot of money to throw at a forty-three thousand a year.
I know.
Yeah. Do you think this, uh, loan is, is? I mean, it sounds like you need more than that, but we're not gonna go down that road. But I mean, it's, it's my, I guess what I'm trying to ask, would this get you over the hump?
To be honest with you, two months ago it would have. Um, right now it is a helping hand. I have some other things that are in place. I'm working with the Small Business Administration right now. I've been working, um, with them for the last two months. And now I'm also working with their grant folks and I, I'm being connected to these different avenues right now. But they take time and we know that.
It was the right thing two months ago. Okay, well, if things were going the way you planned it, things shouldn't change. It's just the delay on the, the loan.
No, when I came.
Further apart is what you're saying.
When I came to you guys, I came to you in need at that time. It's not like the need was gonna disappear two months later and still putting things in place.
What I'm saying is it's, if it was stabilized two months ago, the need would be the same, no?
I didn't say it was stabilized two months ago. I said right from the beginning.
Okay.
When the investor pulled out on me, that put me in a terrible place. I'm still climbing, climbing, climbing. But at least I'm climbing up, out. And yeah, this is a hand up.
I guess what I'm, what I'm, what you said was it would have helped more two months ago, but if you were leveled, if the bleeding stopped, you would be, this would still help. But now it seems like that's further away now, is what you said.
But it's still needed. It's not like the bleeding has stopped.
I'm not saying it seems like it's, you know, it seems like the, the gap between the need is keeping, you know, as a business, it's getting further and further out of reach. And it's because of the income and the expenses of the business is what I'm thinking.
If somebody has a cut or a wound, the sooner you get to the wound, the sooner you can address the wound. Am I correct?
That is correct.
I came to you wounded with a cut.
So it's bleeding more now than it was?
Bleeding more, but it's still bleeding. Had I got the Band-Aid two months ago, I probably would not be bleeding right now. Two different perspectives.
Okay. And how far behind are you on rent?
Now another month. Now I'm three months behind.
Okay. So what if this, you know, so, so the, the loan is going to get three months back rent and it's gonna fix some equipment? And so if those things were done, the business is viable enough to continue to pay the bills?
I can open my kitchen. I can start selling food and everybody knows food sales. Definitely. And the darts world, so to speak, is semi-seasonal. So October is a slow month in darts play. I have leagues. I have leagues five nights a week. They play so that they can go to the Big Phoenix Cup, um, tournaments in Nevada in October. November, we are re-establishing those leagues, which my leagues are starting right now. That goes all the way until the next big tournament in Nevada, which is in April. So it's, that's why I say it's semi-seasonal. October and April are lower months. May, you're starting to re-establish and rebuild. But like I said, I'm new, so I'm building and I have my leagues in place now. And they are starting over the second time. And now I've had to add an extra league into my play on Sundays now. So the word is I'm getting traction now.
I like to hear that. And I think you're the best thing that shopping center's had in a long time. You know, I'm gonna there's positive here. Uh, don't, you know, I just, the numbers just are, don't, don't, don't really. I think there's something wrong with the numbers in the spreadsheet. But you're like, uh, Mayor Protem Sunny Sentaines says your enthusiasm last time. Well, I think that, you know, of getting another business in that shopping center is, is, means a lot too. And that with your enthusiasm. And, and I just wanted to, you know, in my comments on a positive note, you know, there's, there's, you're a positive person and, and it's a positive business for that corner intersection there.
I, I want to add also on, um, and this is something that my staff could not grasp when we first started because normally dart, the local bars in Orange County, because that's where they are, um, they have tournaments on Saturdays. And I refuse to have darts tournaments on Saturdays. I wanted to have events on Saturdays at Dart's Corner. And I'm happy to say that I have booked Saturday events all the way up until Christmas. Now I'm having, yesterday I had two different people call me to book events and I'm booked. And that made me feel very glad. Um, there is a, a singing group that performs at Spagatini, D W three. They already booked their after-party at my location on November twenty-seventh, which is a Sunday. So I'm working on a relationship between Spagatini and Dart's Corner. I'm just, um, thinking outside the box and everything that I have presented is happening and it's exciting and it's being accepted. And I'm super proud about that. I just, um, yeah, I just need, I just need help. That's it. And learning what's out there and the opportunities for a new business, especially trying to, um, get business loans, especially post-pandemic, finding the lenders wanting you to have at least six months to a year in business, wanting you to have a deposit ten thousand dollars a month in revenue. A startup business and somebody like me grassroots, doing it on my own, not with a corporation, not with, um, a wealthy investor, even the investor that I was with who wanted to change my, completely change my vision and not really fully understanding the darts community like I did. And I stood my ground and said, no. And I'm really glad that I did, even though I'm paying for it right now. I have no regrets for that. Because I know, I knew what my vision was and it is coming alive. Even with no money, I'm still making it happen. I'm still putting things in place. I just need a helping hand.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Ramada?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, first off, Tanya, thank you for coming back with the information. The math assignment was probably quite challenging.
It was.
Yeah, um, we can see, we can see some of that. Um, when I was looking through it more and I'll go beyond the, you know, the, the, um, the revenue and the cost, but, um, uh, of, of the food and beverage stuff. But, um, I noticed on one light item, um, what could insurance? And I noticed that was a fixed amount over the three-year period and, and typically insurance to me seems to go up all the time. So is, is, is that an annual policy?
Yes.
It's an annual policy and it's, and they're guaranteeing some kind of fixed amount for, for a three-year period? Is that, is that your understanding or is insurance?
No, but that's what I'm paying right now. So I can't predict.
No, I understand that, but you probably needed the fact or something. Um, that was just one note, um, just, uh, just, uh, in looking at it, um, to me, the cost of insurance is more fluid. But in, in this case, everything's going up. Have you pursued any other grants out there with no, uh, no luck confirmation, county grants? Uh, uh, I know that, I think I passed along something. There's something with, I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's particular to restaurants, Jim, or, or again, it's, it's, it's reading, get into it and, and knowing what, what, what it can apply to, um.
Yeah, I, I actually, you've sent me a few of those and I've actually forwarded them to Tanya for her to investigate.
All right. Well, thank you. Being the first applicant, I think we know it's, sometimes it's, it's the tough one. And, you know, obviously everybody's trying to dot their i's, cross their t's, you know, figure out, you know, and even predict. And, and that's where it's, it's that blend, you know, there are, there's some trends, of course, we can work with, but, um, sometimes it's, it's, it's some, uh, best guess estimates, logical thinking, so on and so on. So, um, uh, again, um, I do want to also, uh, finish on a, you know, positive note. Again, you know, again, having a business there, that's, that's positive. Uh, getting people jobs, that's positive. So, uh, and again, um, I know you're, you're a strong person. You're, 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 you're very focused and I, and, and seen your track record in past, I think, you know, you, uh, definitely positive things come out, you know, when, when you, when you get into it.
Thank you. And I do need to add something. I have five employees. Um, one of my bartenders, she quit. She quit last week.
Oh. All right. So, um, yeah, that's just for now, that's, that's some of the comments, um. Yeah, uh, just, uh, kind of maybe going along with some of the comments, you know, the, the math is still kind of fluctuating here. And it's, uh, we're trying to, you know, harness it in or, or, you know, uh, you know, lasso it in and, and figure it out. So. Uh, uh, yes, unfortunately, this, uh, the, the, the timing of this all is, is gotten off. Uh, but, uh, we, we definitely need to, you know, work on the right thing. So I will leave it at that. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak?
Yes, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. McMillan, um, a couple of questions. Well, first I'll start with my comment. Uh, most businesses take three to five years to get really going, right?
Yes, I, I see why.
One thing I've noticed, um, is you have the knowledge on the dart side. The whole business side is a little bit here where you're, you're working on it. Can you tell me, can you tell us, sorry, how many times you're meeting with your SBA loan or your, uh, small business, um, development team?
Every week.
Every week? Have you, have they given you a marketing, a person? Have they given you a?
Yes.
A, a business management person?
I just met the business management person two weeks ago.
Okay. And have they provided someone for loans, specialty in loans?
For.
Because you would qualify for some very good loans. And I think that if, if you were granted a loan today, that would help be a piggyback for you in those loan programs. But they have a grant specialist
Right.
within that. So you need to advocate for that as well.
I'm already working on that. So we started working on a packet, um, through Spark. That's what, it's PCR, um, which is part of SBA, the Small Business Division in Long Beach. And so I'm working on that part right now.
So in those three to five years, right, that most businesses really take to kind of come off the red, where do you see yourself?
Um, absolutely successful. I'll put it that way.
Year three, year four, year two, year?
I'm seeing myself successful at the end of year two.
Okay. I'll echo some of the comments that my colleagues have made too regarding the presence that you bring to that, that intersection and that, that shopping center. Um, it's been, I've seen a lot of positives, uh, in that, in that, uh, shopping center as a whole. So I just want to thank you for that as well, too. Okay, I just wanted to get some more info. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Coops, go ahead.
Tanya, you're a class act and I like you.
I like you too.
And I'm gonna vote on this thing, not with my business sense, but with my heart. Because like everyone said here, you make Belfar better. And what you've done in that station.
You're gonna make me cry.
You've done that. You've made a bell. Now, you got dealt a bad hand when that partner messed you up. And you've been trying to dig yourself out of that hole ever since. But you already made the commitment to rent the building, put the equipment in there. And then the guy had perfect timing to try to take you down. And that was none of your fault. And I appreciate how hard you've worked to try to maintain this thing. And as Mr. Sanchez has mentioned, if we're able to help you tonight with the thirty thousand, you can catch up your rent, you can get your kitchen going. You can get the kitchen going to the point where you're gonna make some money out of it.
Yes.
And hopefully, this thirty thousand dollars would be enough to be the seed money to get you some more money from other entities. That's how I look at it. I appreciate, I can read a financial statement just as well as anybody else. But I'm gonna have to look, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna vote for you and we'll see what the rest of them do. But I just appreciate how hard you have worked to come to this. You've worked hard all your life. And I don't want to see your seventy-plus years go down the drain with all the work you've done and have nothing to show for it. Because you're this close to having a part of the American dream that you never had before. And if I can be an assistance in doing that, I was always taught there's only real, one reason we're on this earth and that's to help each other. And you need help. And I'm willing to put my vote against, uh, uh, with your assumption to be successful. Because you're trying and you come to the meetings and you brought in your whole cheering section last time. And, uh, but I just want to let you know, I appreciate your, your stance. I appreciate what you're trying to do. And I appreciate the fact that you're a lady of honor and that you would come to us and request this, but. come to us and request this. But I'm going to vote for you, okay?
Thank you. I have people depending on me, people who need it work. And I know that, I knew they needed work because I've been seeing them for the last ten years that I've been playing darts. And I reached back and I told them, hey, I want you to come work for me. And they are so dedicated to me. And I fight, and I fight and I make sure that they get paid before I pay myself. I haven't been paid anything.
Oh, you've been feeding it. The money's going the other way. Any other questions up here?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one more. Ms. McMillan, if, if this, if I were to ask for a condition that you continue to partake on the SB, I, I don't think we have a program right now like we do for emprendedores, right? We have a Spanish version, which is all about education and it's about business empowerment and helping someone really understand the business side of things.
Yes.
We have that for, a Spanish program for that and it's great. We're working on an English version. But in the meantime, would you have, would you be willing to commit to continuing to doing your SBA programs and everything else so that you're continuing to learn, meeting with those professionals that guide this?
I would take it a step further. If the city wanted to set up a program and they needed somebody to come in as a mentor or somebody to help teach them along the way, mistakes, do's and don'ts, I would happily dedicate myself, volunteer myself to do that.
Perfect. That's all I need. Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, to Jim, actually. Jim, this being the first, again, request for this microloan, as part of the process, is there like an ongoing monitoring of, of the loan? Do you, again, check on, you know, the applicant every quarter or to see how things are going, to, to, you know, to monitor it, to, to maybe throw in some advice and, and other things, some, again, two-way, you know, dialogue to, to, again, help each other? And that's something, I think that was the follow on what the SBA is doing. Also from the city, since we're the lender.
Right. Well, yeah, there is items in the, the guidelines that require us to, to check in with the lender, lendees or the borrowers on a quarterly basis, see how they're doing.
But I could reach out to Jim, like, because he's been so amazing, teaching me things I didn't know and helped me understand a lot of aspects to this business. So I could still check in with Jim with, before.
Well, you've started a relationship with Jim.
Yeah.
Continue it.
Yes, thank you.
No, I, I can just say that anybody that would just love to see you prosper.
Thank you.
You know, I can say that. It's, you know, but, you know, it's like what Councilmember Coop says, you know, you know, it's, he's not even going to look at the, you know, the business end of it because it doesn't make sense, but you make sense.
I'm going to work my tail off to make sure this works.
With that?
Just, just one final question. I know that your heart is here, this venture, and you've been putting money, your own money, you're not drawing any salaries, going the other way around. So I'm curious to know, how, how much longer are you willing to put your own money into this business?
As long as it takes.
Okay. So there's no surrender, so to speak. Okay, all right. That's good to know. All right, thank you.
The only thing I like, saw in the, in the financials that are the spreadsheet, the infusion goes down. And let's hope it does. That was, that was the only thing that looked good. It was a little less infusion each month for the three years.
Yeah.
That, that did make sense. There was a point in time. All right. Let's see if there's anybody in the audience that wants to come up and talk, Tanya.
Can I sit down?
Yes, go and sit down, yes.
You guys made me cry. Thank you.
Dan, Dan did and it wasn't us.
That wasn't my intent, Tanya.
Yeah. Anybody else wishing to speak at the public hearing on this item?
Who to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Without objection, that'll be the order. What's your pleasures, guys?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Kind of coming here tonight and understanding that the collateral component on it, understanding the commitment by the applicant to continue to educate herself and continue to work hard at that end and putting herself through the infusions of continuing her business, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash six-two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement to file number nine-five-nine in a form approved by the city attorney with Dart's Corner LLC to lend funds for working startup capital and equipment acquisition at one-seven-two-four-two dash four-four Downey Avenue for the Economic Development Business Assistance Plan, Chapter Five, continued from October twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
You okay, Tanya?
Yeah. We, we took a long way to get there, but there was questions, tough questions that had to be asked. Mr. Stewart, item twelve A.
This is a consideration possible action to read by title only, wait further reading and introduce ordinance number one-four-one-nine, an ordinance repealing Bellflower Municipal Code two-point-four-zero and amending chapter, and this is a correction, three-point-two-eight and not three-point-two-zero, in its entirety to regulate contracting, including purchases of goods, supplies and services. And Mr. Ree has a brief staff report for you.
All right, Mr. Ree, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Based on staff and city attorney's recent review of city's purchasing ordinance policies and procedures, we recommend that the City Council consider amending the city's purchasing ordinance BMC Chapter three-point-two-zero and two-eight in its entirety. This includes repealing BMC Chapter two-point-four-zero, which pertains to the signature authority, and placing the provision in BMC Chapter three-point-two-eight instead. Our purpose is to make the purchasing ordinance more comprehensive and flexible. Some of the major changes, the current purchasing ordinance covers just supplies and equipment. The proposed purchasing ordinance also includes services, both general services and professional services. And for signature authority, city manager's authority is proposed to be increased to sixty thousand dollars. This matches city managers' authority and their public worth contract. And department directors' authority is proposed to be increased to fifteen thousand from the current two thousand dollars. Lastly, the informal purchasing threshold will be up to sixty thousand dollars and then formal contracts or formal bidding procedure requirement would kick in after sixty thousand dollars. The current threshold is twenty-sixty thousand dollars for formal contract and, and below that is the informal three bid, verbal and written proposals and quotes. This concludes my report. Both city attorney and I will be, have to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions to Tay Ree?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, actually, just, just comments and just like what Mr. Ree mentioned, I really like the, the proposed ordinance. It's very comprehensive. It's streamlined the authority, especially given to the city manager, raising the authority to sixty thousand dollars and also the authority given to department managers. And that's what we want because we're giving authority to managers to execute their jobs. And so I really like this and it's very practical, the way it was written. And one of the things that, that really caught my attention is giving local vendors a preference. And so which is really good because we don't want our local vendors to be penalized because our sales tax, for example, is higher than other cities. So that's, that kind of basically balances out. So overall, it is well-written and thank you so much for, for working on this purchasing procedures. Thank you.
City attorney did most of the work.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Mr. City Attorney then. Thank you so much.
But it was a presentation.
That actually sold the, the ordinance, the presentation.
Yeah, it always does.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a question for Mr. Tay. Correct me if I'm mistaken, but it does include a CPI component to it, right?
Yes, you're correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. No, I think this is, this is great that we're, and of course, thank you to both of you for keeping us in compliance.
You want to put, you want to put that in form of a motion?
Sure, I'll make that another motion over here as I'm choking with this shirt. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive, to, sorry, waive further, by title only, to read by title only and waive further reading and introduce ordinance number one-four-one-nine dash, an ordinance repealing Bellflower Municipal Code, Chapter two-point-four-zero and amending Chapter three-point-two in its entirety to regulate contracting, including purchases of goods, supplies and services.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Coops.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, okay, the motion said three-point-two, but it should be three-point-two-eight. All right. And just a quick comment again, I think this is very reasonable. I think it's what's happening in like other cities, you know, those cities that keep business moving along, this, this will help in keeping business moving along. You know, just again, every day stuff, you know, get it taken care of. So.
Yeah, your motion as amended?
Motion as amended to three-point-two-eight.
Okay. I'll roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Mr. Stewart, item twelve B.
This is consideration possible action to read by title only, wait further reading and introduce ordinance number one-four-two-zero and ordinance adding section nine-point-zero-four-point-one-one-zero to Bellflower Municipal Code prohibiting unauthorized possession of individual catalytic converters. And Travis Seis has our staff report for us today.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As many of us know, catalytic converter theft continues to be an issue and concern for residents and businesses in the city of Bellflower. So in speaking with Lakewood Sheriff Captain Dan Holgin, he indicated that surrounding cities have adopted ordinances amending their respective municipal codes, which makes the possession of an uninstalled catalytic converter unlawful. So these code amendments reportedly provide law enforcement personnel necessary tools to begin prosecuting these types of crimes. So if passed, ordinance number fourteen-twenty would add section nine-point-zero-four-point-one-one-zero to the Bellflower Municipal Code prohibiting unauthorized possession of individual catalytic converters. And then staff would also bring back a resolution establishing an administrative fine amount for a violation to this code section should the ordinance be approved. So staff's recommendation is to read by title only, waive further reading and introduce ordinance number fourteen-twenty, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. So that completes the report. Staff is available for any questions.
Any question to staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, quickly, Travis, there's reference to some other cities, Lakewood, Artesia, some of the local cities. Has it been, what got successful there?
According to Captain Holgin, yes, it has been. So this essentially, from my understanding, attaches an administrative fine to this offense. So initially, what the deputies do if they do come across someone in possession of a stolen item is they can arrest based off of, I believe it's Penal Code four-ninety-six PC. But the code amendment attaches the actual administrative fine because these offenses likely do not result in a penalty. So this attaches a penalty to that.
Does this, you, you had mentioned that when they come across individuals, whether they come across businesses that have accepted them, same thing?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of that. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment that Paramount, the city of Paramount also has it. And my guess is that the captain is going for all five cities so that they can enforce it, you know, uniformly. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up question to Mr. Councilmember Hamada's question regarding the recycler. Should there be anything in place to kind of monitor recyclers?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You'll notice that in the ordinance it references Business and Professions Code, Section twenty-one-six-ten-B, that already has a link to the recyclers. Recyclers are already very heavily regulated and allow law enforcement to come on premises in order to confirm that all the metals that are being, are accepted and in the possession of those recyclers are actually legal. So this is, the tie into that Business and Professions Code is, is really to, for ease of reference for law enforcement officers to make sure that all the same things that are needed for recyclers are provided by the person having catalytic converters. Because really, the catalytic converters have all the metals in them that recyclers would also produce. So to answer your question, there's already provisions in state law that allow law enforcement to go in and, and monitor the recyclers.
So I'm curious to know, because if we are, if somebody's monitoring the recyclers already, so where do these stolen converters go?
That I can't answer. That's a factual question.
Because somebody, somebody has to buy them, right? They cannot just steal the converters without anyone buying it.
Yeah, it's a bogus, it's make a paper trail. That's, I mean, that's someone in the industry and it's, it's fake paperwork.
So that means, that means that we have a lot of dishonest, some dishonest recyclers then?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Would you like to put that in a motion?
Yes, I'd be glad to. So we can put more, more teeth into this battle against theft of catalytic converters. I know that you've been very much involved, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to read by title only, waive further reading, introduce ordinance fourteen-twenty, an ordinance adding section nine-point-o-four-point-one-one-zero to the Bellflower Municipal Code prohibiting unauthorized possession of individual catalytic converters.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Santi Santinas and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Item twelve C.
This is consideration possible action to one, read by title and waive further reading and introduce ordinance number one-four-two-one, an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-two additions of the California Electric, California Building Code, the California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, the California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, the California Energy Code, California Fire Code, the California, the California Existing Building Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Reference Standards Code and California Building Standards Administrative Code, making certain amendments based upon local conditions and amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to reflect such changes, setting and setting a public hearing for December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. I would otherwise not recommend December twelfth, but I would say upfront that this cannot, the second read cannot occur at a special meeting. Or do you want to do a special meeting seventeenth? This is what, we are, I'm sorry. This is one we are going to recommend doing the, the second read. If it goes further to December seventeenth, it's a special meeting we have scheduled for that date.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteen. We're going to change the date to the fifteenth.
I'm doing that. Yeah. So I think, I'm sorry, the fifteenth, correct. That's the day that we're going to do. I got the, the two items mixed up, the last two items. So that's what we're going to do. So this is a periodic thing that we do, we do every several years, update the California Building Code. Our building official, Jamie Brickler is here to make a brief staff report, answer any questions you might have. And the planning director, Beth Corpus is here as well to answer any questions you might have related to that. So go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jamie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. We are pleased to present to you the ordinances for the twenty-twenty-two Building Code updates. The code is updated every three years. This ordinance amends portions of the twenty-twenty-two California Building and Safety Codes and adopts the twenty-twenty-two the 2022 addition of the California Building and Safety Codes. California law requires the city council to conduct a public hearing before second reading of ordinances when adopting the California Building and Safety Codes by reference. It is our recommendation to set the public hearing for December 15, 2022. As Mr. Stewart just mentioned, please note, this is an amendment from the staff report, which suggested December 12. The major changes relate to fire protection, solar photovoltaic, um, power systems, EV charging stations, and the permit expiration timeframe. The projects for which a building permit application and building plans were submitted before the ordinance's effective date and for which building permits are obtained within 90 days from their effective date would be exempt from the update, updated regulations. It is our recommendation to read by title only, waive further readings, and introduce ordinance number 1421, and set a public hearing for the December 15, 2022 city council meeting for a second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance, or alternatively discuss and take other actions related to this item. This concludes our presentation, and we are here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
The mayor, Ms. Brickeler, is this your first presentation to the city council?
It is.
Okay, so I have to ask you a question?
Yes, please do.
Don't let her off that easy.
Yeah, exactly. Just, just to confirm, um, so we are adopting basically the California codes?
Yes.
We're not, we're not, um, putting in any new codes that were concocted by our city attorney, for example? These are all?
Concocted? Concocted?
I didn't know you had that kind of power.
So these are all California codes?
No, that is correct. Everything is California.
There's nothing that was inserted from, from staff, from anywhere else?
No.
Everything's coming from all the building codes, the residential that were enumerated by the city attorney?
There are some administrative, um, to the Bellflower Municipal Code, but that's, that's it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that there are things that have been brought forward, that the council has previously added to the administrative code, and that includes, for example, definitions of red tagging, yellow tagging for, for nuisance abatement purposes, and also, if you recall, when you adopted the cannabis regulations, you also authorized the building official to go in there and discontinue electrical service from unlicensed cannabis facilities and those types of things. So those types of administrative functions have been brought forward as part of this ordinance are included with the proposed regulations. That's just something that is a legacy, but to your point, everything else is state-imposed other than local requirements that specific findings need to be made for.
And, and just to confirm, those local requirements have been adopted by the city council already?
Correct.
So there's nothing new here?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Nothing new.
All right.
2022.
So basically, we're just, um, adopting those, you know, in kind of a formal manner?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Santaynez?
Thank you.
Sorry, if I can just add one more thing. There was a change, so originally, you had approved self-certification process via resolution. We did add it to the code.
But that was adopted by the council already?
It's the same, it's the same exact language, it's just now in the BMS.
So I want, I want to assure our viewing public, there's nothing new that was basically that the staff came up with. Everything we are adopting is from the?
State.
Previously adopted resolutions, ordinances, and from the state?
From the state, yes.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
One correction, we've been batting around this hearing date. We're just talking to the city clerk, I think we could actually do it November 28th at that meeting, because we have 10 days from Friday if we notice it. Is that correct?
With the new publisher, we're able to notice it this Friday, which is the 18th, which I believe would give us enough time to hold the hearing on the 28th.
There's, you, neither of you have any objections on the 28th?
I, I believe we have to notice twice.
You do.
So it may not be enough time.
Notice once then.
If it's twice within 10 days, it could be the 18th and the 20th, well, Christmas, it'd be the holiday, so we could check with the publisher to see what the publication date would be for, um, the holiday week.
So why don't we do it, I mean, if not the 28th, we're giving you the authority to do it on the 15th of December.
Except that it has to be adopted at a regular meeting.
Regular ordinances must be adopted at a regular meeting. If we postpone this until December 12th, we'll also have to adopt an urgency ordinance to have them become effective January 1st. Otherwise, there will be a lag of 12 days between the time, between January 1st, when all uniform codes become effective and when this ordinance becomes effective.
If you adopt it on the 15th, you could do an urgency ordinance and then have a lag, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying we'll do two things. One is adopt a regular ordinance. That must be adopted on a regular council date. You can adopt an urgency ordinance on a special council meeting date, but we would have to adopt two ordinances regardless in order to prevent any gap.
What do you recommend?
If the noticing goes, is sufficient for us to do it on the November 28th, and I recommend we do it on the 28th, that takes care of all the noticing or the, the lag time. Um, I think there's enough time, that was my original thought, that we were going to have it on the 28th. Alternatively, we'll have it on the December 12th, and we'll have two ordinances, and that's fine, it's not a big deal.
Well, except we'd prefer not to have it on December 12th. It's reorganization meeting, we don't want to pile that one up.
For the, yeah, can't get around that.
Right. So it looks like it's gonna go the 12th.
Or, one other possibility, sorry. If we're gonna have a reorganization on December 12th, and we're having that only as, um, as reorganization, we can postpone the public hearing until the, assuming that we have a second meeting in December, are we automatically canceling it?
Or dark, the second meeting in December.
You could, we can have it scheduled for December 12th, continue the regular meeting until the 15th, and then have a, the regular meeting actually on the 15th that wouldn't count as a special meeting, would continue on as a regular meeting. So we can do it that way.
Oh, okay, so reschedule, okay, okay. Let's have a special meeting, okay.
It's within five days of, of the 12th, so it works.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So call the 15th as a regular meeting?
Correct.
Reschedule, okay.
It would be a continuance of the regular meeting.
Continued public hearing, and continue the meeting until the 12th and until the 15th.
And it's within five days, so we could use the same agenda.
This seems so much easier a few hours.
So.
Well, because we do it anyway, we reschedule regular meetings.
I know, that's right.
Still have an urgency ordinance on that year.
Could, uh, could the preferred date be the 28th if we can meet the publication requirements?
Yeah.
Could that be part of the motion?
It has to be.
November 28th or in the alternative, December 12th.
Right, right.
Makes sense.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to the publisher tomorrow to see if we can meet that publication requirement.
Yeah. It's, it's a quirk of the government code.
Yeah.
That's not a city attorney concoction.
Or a building official.
Sounds like the city attorney got a little segue there to get there. That was a, that was a path in one yellow brick road.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion? I think that's where we're at. For November 28th. Yeah, yeah. I'll just go ahead and, 12C, uh, I'll make a motion to read by title only, waive further reading to introduce ordinance number 1421, and set the public hearing date to November 28, 22, uh, the city council, council meeting for the second reading, uh, possible adoption of the ordinance.
To that, so it'd be November 28th if we can meet their requirements, or December 12th if we can't, you know, alternatively.
Alternat, okay, so, set the public hearing for, uh, November 28th or December 12th if we can't meet the noticing guidelines 2022. Uh, city council.
The motion.
Yeah. And a motion by myself and a second by Mayor Protem Santaynez. Call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Item 13A, Mr. Stewart.
So this is a consideration possible action, authorize increasing Southwest Patrol Inc. deployment deputy overtime budget and purchase of mobile surveillance camera system. Uh, Mr. Hockman has a staff report for that.
Actually, the city attorney wrote it, so I'll just turn it over, no, I'm, geez.
Was a concocted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There's been some talk and interest of late to consider, uh, some strategies for perhaps increasing, uh, enforcement services predominantly in the PM hours. Um, and, and the, the talk has been a lot about, we'll call it quality of life issues, you know, some of the, the camping, illegal camping, and drinking in public, loitering, and those kinds of things, that normally within the sheriff's priority, uh, list would put those in a routine basis, which would make for a more prolonged response time. And so, uh, some alternatives to, um, to using patrol for that kind of function is what's represented in the staff report. And one of the constraints that's very real to contract cities within the last year or so is the sheriff's, uh, position where they find themselves in, unable to provide any new, uh, deputies or personnel assigned to contract cities. They find themselves very lean and for a variety of reasons, they don't have the personnel to help cities grow their programs, and so that's kind of what's brought us to this point. And, uh, there's, uh, use of Southwest Patrol is very familiar to you. We've had them for maybe four years or so, and it's gotten to be very common for me to contact the supervisor and say, hey, now can we use a guard to do this, you know, early morning, or late at night, or this facility, or that property? And so they've been very flexible at helping us in these ways, parking structure and et cetera, parks, public buildings and so on. Um, so what we could consider doing with them is expanding it significantly more, their patrol function, uh, using them in perhaps commercial corridors and, uh, in some cases, residential neighborhoods where we know there to be trouble. And, um, especially with the armed guards, they're more experienced and have, um, a little more ability to engage. We could, uh, consider, you know, illegal camping and people on bus stops and things of that sort that are breaking, again, quality of life rules, use them instead of patrol or in addition to patrol to handle some of those things after, after dark especially. And so I've given you some, um, cost models there, just as basically how those costs shake out, and that was one of the ways we were looking at perhaps increasing this, you know, after-hours, PM kind of enforcement. The other two that are listed, having to do a deputy overtime, uh, for anyone who wants to fill that at night, who qualifies for the program, knowing the kinds of duties they would be doing, and having our SAOs periodically switch their schedules to the evening to fill in. Uh, those are pretty well intact already. We could probably use some enhancement of the budget to, if we were able to increase that overtime use, but that's nothing, uh, particularly new, but I wanted you to know that can and does go on. And the last item then on the list was this camera system. You've seen them in various, probably shopping centers and, uh, maybe construction sites where very prominent camera system that can be set up, um, and operated 24/7. Um, it would be obviously a deterrent, is its main objective, with the secondary effect of perhaps being able to, uh, capture images and so on of the, of a perpetrator after the fact. It's difficult to know what crime has been prevented, but it would seem inherent that that system would be helpful in that area, and the city could use this at places around town and other centers where they're encountering trouble as a pattern, and the city would be able to provide that as a service to, uh, potentially stage the camera system there for a period of time. So that's just for your consideration as well. The cost varies depending on the number of, of features, different cameras, multiple cameras, uh, remote sensing, remote, uh, surveill, being able to see through the cameras in real time. There's a, there's a variety of features that we would have to look at, but that would adjust the price somewhat from the rough cost that I've listed for you there. So, uh, those are three or four different ways that we could, as I say, enhance some security and some enforcement in Bellflower, particularly in the evening hours. And that's generally the end of my presentation and would welcome any questions.
All right, who wants to go first?
Here.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, I know that we have used Southwest Patrols for how many years now? Couple of years?
About four.
Four years, oh my goodness. Uh, what is your assessment, Mr. Hockman, in terms of, um, deterrence of Southwest Patrol versus sheriff's deputies? Are the criminals really afraid of patrols, or it's just basically the quality of life issues that they are addressing?
Well, um, obviously, a criminal would be afraid of anybody that's providing scrutiny at what they're up to, uh, and so there would be a factor of value to that, um, for anyone in uniform that's, whose business is to be watching and, and, and looking out for this kind of thing. Obviously, the quality of the engagement and the ability to summon, uh, assistance and, and deal with it more comprehensively would go to the more expensive deputy, police officer and et cetera. So I think the best value would be this idea of, of taking on some of what would be routine calls for the sheriff would be their primary objective. So the person, uh, misbehaving on the, on the street or on the sidewalk, uh, wouldn't necessarily, uh, get a rapid response from the sheriff, but would get a rapid response from Southwest, whose job it is to deal with that level of problem. So I think it's, I would say, visual, quality of life, kinds of issues, the camping and so on, would be the best use with a secondary benefit of sometimes preventing something based on, oh geez, there's a car and we don't know who it is, we better push on and not do whatever it is we were getting ready to do, you know what I mean? It's harder to ma, harder to measure that second thing.
All right, okay, so you painted a very good picture. Now, in, in terms of staffing, does Southwest have any issue with hiring new staff? Because this is gonna entail almost like a new staff.
Right. Spoke to the manager and he said they would be able to fulfill basically what we're looking at. If you, if, for instance, if you wanted a couple of guards working most nights a week, he would be able to fulfill that requirement.
Will that be overtime or basically new staff being, being hired?
Let's see, the guards, for the guard service, there would no, be no overtime, it would just be the straight.
No, no, what I'm saying is, are they, are they gonna be, are they working already eight hours and then if we hired them, let's say we go for Southwest, because for example, here, you're saying five days, five, eight hours a day, will that be additional eight hours for someone who already, uh, put in eight hours during the day?
It, it would be additional people.
People, okay, so new staff then.
Correct. Now, if they doubled up at all here and there, just for efficiency sake, that might happen, but it wouldn't be working someone ragged for 12 or 15 hours a night, that wouldn't be.
Okay, so it could be overtime, let's say, four hours or four hours or three hours, something like that?
If, and I'm just, I'm just kind of imagining, if there was some overtime, it would be minimal, because the, the objective is to have somebody working who's alert and, and ready to go, and not somebody who's being worked too hard and too long to fill in what we're asking for.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense, okay. All right. And then, uh, regarding this, uh, the trailer, uh, does any of our neighboring city have this?
Um, not, I'm, I've seen him in Southern California, there's one up on Rosecrans at one of the drugstores near Lakewood Boulevard, um, and I spoke to a manager there who seemed to be pleased with it, again.
Rosecrans and?
Uh, just, just east of Lakewood.
East of Lakewood, okay, okay.
And, um, again, difficult to know what didn't happen as a result of the camera system being there, but, um, again, it's, um, it's very prominent and it does, uh, look, um, imposing, if you will.
And speaking with them, do they think it's kind of effective?
Yeah, when I asked that exact question, they, again, said, well, we think it's helped because in the past, we had, um, more of these shoplifting episodes, you know, especially the ones that are a little more aggressive, and she said that they haven't been having that level of shoplifting more recently since the cameras put up. In other words, uh, maybe the more organized types of crime seem to have decreased, in her opinion, since the camera was put up.
So it's really serving as a deterrent then?
That's her belief, but hard to measure.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Any other questions?
Yes. Any other questions? Mr. Sanchez, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. First off, Joel, thank you for your presentation. The, the first question I have for you is related to the relationship and the level of communication between our three entities, right? Our public safety team, Southwest Patrol and the Sheriff's Department. Do you feel that the Sheriff Department works well with Southwest Patrol enough for it to be effective as a communicating body?
When I've spoken to some of the sheriff's personnel and spoken to the Southwest supervisor, I've gotten the impression that there's cooperation, that there is, first of all, safety. If there was ever a safety issue, Southwest does call the sheriff. For, on a couple of occasions, they've, Southwest has detained vandals in the parking structure and on another location and did call for the sheriff to respond and make the arrest. And, and so, there was no hesitancy to reach out and do that. And I think the belief is it's not competition, it's, it's more help. And, and I think each of those three entities is grateful for whatever help can be provided. So, I, I don't think there's any friction between the three. I think it's more allies than adversaries or a different word.
Thank you for, thank you for sharing that. And then with regards to the surveillance systems, are these the ones with the, you know, flashing red lights and blue lights? Okay.
And that would be a, a collection of, of features that one could select, you know, different types of cameras, different numbers, different lighting systems, solar versus diesel engine. And we would have to kind of, this came up actually fairly recently, so we'd have to do a little research and, and pick out what works best. But it would be roughly in that price range that's listed on your staff report.
The, where I've seen these types of surveillance systems, portable surveillance systems, it's like in the downtowns of Long Beach, Hollywood and so forth. And they put them in a very strategic place to kind of deter the, you know, the passerbyer because they don't know if it's a real, if it's a patrol car or if it's a camera system, right? So, that's the neat thing about them, I think. But just want to share that. And then with regards to the Southwest Patrol, the fiscal impact that you've shared, is that, is that per, per person? These rates, are these per person or for a team or?
Yes. So, at the bottom of the first page, an armed guard, forty, fifty-five dollars an hour, that includes the vehicle and all the costs associated with that patrol function. And then save $10 an hour if you go with unarmed. And unarmed would tend to be more eyes and ears than would be engagement. And if we're looking to deal with, you know, people on benches and camping and, and all of that, at least the first line of defense, engagement would be something I, I would think, you know, we would want to have that ability at least. And so, that's why even if, if there were two guards, for instance, working different parts of town and they needed to get together to deal with a particular situation, you know, if one of them was, was armed and the other maybe wouldn't have to be, is, you know, there's different ways to view it. But I, I would think some level of engagement is something that would be helpful because the idea is that they would handle issues to conclusion rather than simply observe something and then call the sheriff. We would want them to be able to handle it as much as possible rather than dish it off.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. All right, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments for now.
Anybody else?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, thank you for the report. A couple of things. So, for Southwest, you know, the, you know, seven day versus five day, I mean, that, I mean, that would appear, you know, again, like, you know, Sunday through Saturday. Or is the five day just a Monday through Friday? Or can that five day be shifted to the weekend?
It, it's any five days-
It doesn't matter.
Any three days, any two days, any, well, only one seven days, I guess. But yeah. It's very flexible.
Okay. I just wanted to, to confirm that. Because again, I, again, weekends, I think, in town here have been a problem because we always get that sense that who do we call? You know, we can call the sheriff, of course. But again, the response time. So, and again, that, you know, that point you made about the response, that's, that's, that's key, number one. And then, you know, coverage, meaning to me, on the weekends, too. So, I think that's important. When it comes to these, you know, camera systems, in, you know, other cities where they've used them, and this is in years past, is, you know, the flashing blue lights. Some people have commented, that's very annoying. So, I don't know if that's-
Can't please them all.
Yeah, of course. So, but, you know, between the two, the quality of, of the, again, of the equipment. I mean, I could see the solar getting damaged because of that, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the cell is right there, very low. That's the one at the Walgreens.
Correct. And when I approached it, it talked at me. So, I knew I was getting too close.
Yeah. I thought somebody was talking to me, too, one time. But, and again, I, I think there was a past robbery there. That's, and since that's been placed, and it's, I've noticed it for maybe, maybe a month and a half or so. My understanding, there's been no, no robberies since. But again, maybe they, you know, that's maybe helpful in being one of those deterrents. But quality wise, you know, life, life of the equipment, has it been the solar or the, the more expensive diesel?
That's going to be a, a part of the research, I think. There was, I, I asked about the ability for the charge to last through the night. Sometimes on a cloudy day, you don't get enough juice and then at, at night it might kick out.
Like a backup battery kind of thing.
Yeah. But so far, what the manager said, that there hasn't been that problem. And the system there is, like you say, fairly new. So, I'm not sure what shelf life we're talking about just yet. But again, part of research will help us figure that out.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
So, Joel, if I see diesel and solar as a possibility, $45,035, would Public Works have an, they would place this or how, who's going to be responsible for where they're located? I'm sure they're brought back to City Yard at some point in time. How do they go?
Sure. We, we do, I'm imagining we would do it just like the radar trailer. Public Safety has vehicles that move them around. And we've moved light trailers before, the ones at Public Works Yard. So, it'd be akin to that. I think the same level, the mast comes down and it's not that large when you pull it all down and get it condensed, so.
Is it something that we could lease and experiment with? Or do we have to make a commitment to buy this thing?
I think what you've done, sir, is just given me another thing to research-
Right. Yeah.
As it turns out, so.
No, in, you know, we, we buy these equipment and hopefully we can use it effectively all the time. But I, we're out there in a new place. I don't want this thing sitting in the corner and say, oh, yeah. You know how that goes. But check to see if we could, a 90-day purchase, put it against the purchase price or something like that. I'd like to have some data on whether or not it's effective. And I know it's, some of it's mysterious as to whether or not the people that are going to take, go to Walgreens and take all their product are intimidated by the, but see if that's a possibility. If we got to put all our dough on the table. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. Just to piggyback that, this is just a, a menu item to have staff do research a little more.
Right. And I appreciate that.
Yeah. But I understand it's, it's a lot of money. You know, the, the camera trailers are dropping the bucket, buckets are the other numbers we're seeing. Yeah. At least we got a piece of material equipment.
Are we still using our, our four-byes to trail the trail? The quads.
They haven't been out recently, but yes.
Well, and I think of that when I look at this.
That crossed my mind.
Yeah. I didn't know, you know. And they're getting older, too. We've had those things 10 years, haven't we?
It's been a bunch, you know, a bunch of years.
So, you know, I know a flat tire was a major catastrophe or so. But we may not have the personnel to be able to utilize them based on the, how sheriff deputies are so in short supply.
Yeah. Sheriff's Patrol are having to do four overtime shifts a month, at least each of them, to cover shortfalls, personnel shortfalls. So, that puts a strain right there, you know, so.
So, if you don't have the personnel and you've got all this equipment, then what are we doing here, you know?
Yeah. Well, the camera would be a city piece that city staff would deal with, but-
No, I get it. But nevertheless, just seeing if that's a possibility when you do your investigation.
Sure. All right. My turn. And I got a lot to say. As far as the, so, start with Southwest Patrol. They have experience of pushing people, you know, when we, when they're looking at our parks at night when they're closed and they, and they see knuckleheads out there and they can push. So, they have experience pushing them on, moving them on and whatnot. I vision this as, as, as even a daytime car. It's, it's help for, for the campers out on the sidewalks and making a mess. Is it something that they, we think they could do? And if they, if, I can just see patrol in bus stops for a little bit because it seems like the campers want to camp on a bus stop. And then we have a, a person that needs to get on a bus and, you know, they'd probably have got to move down to the next one, the next block, line one with a vacancy. But do they, I guess the question I'm asking, do they feel confident enough to, to handle a crazy homeless person?
Right. So-
Something they has, not in their wheelhouse yet.
Uh, they've, they've had some dealings, as I've talked, in other assignments, other cities, because they're, they're really growing and they've got services all, you know, all over the Southland. So, there's, there's experience with that. And again, the, you know, armed guards would be a little more on the mature side with a little more training based on having, having, being armed. And I think that would be helpful to have mostly in the afternoon evenings, nights, because I still contend that during the daytime, mostly SAOs and CSOs and us, we're out there looking for bus stops. And if we miss it, we'll get it, we'll get it later. But filling the void that might be at 10:00 at night or, or midnight where somebody's, you know, people are still out and about. And then if there's an illegal camping situation, it, it, it would be nice to get it taken care of more quickly. And that's where I think their value would be.
Wait till seven in the morning.
Yeah. Six, but yeah.
Yeah. Six, six. I get it. And I, what you said armed, I would definitely go armed. There's no sense not for the cost of not doing armed because it seems like somebody that's armed has a little, you know, a little more clout. And like you said, it's more experienced.
And more training, more sort of occasions.
Yeah. And then the deputy, the other menu is, I guess, for lack of, overtime deputy that is, that is called a no-call deputy patrol car.
Right.
That means he doesn't take calls from Lakewood Station to go off to a traffic accident or a burglary unless there's something real bad happened, I imagine, they'd pull him.
Correct. What we, and we, we're, have a little bit of this now, but we would try to emphasize it more. We would create a position that anybody, not just Lakewood Station, but any deputy who was looking for overtime, that agreed to the parameters of the assignment to be filling this car could, could handle that and take it. And we would have training materials to say, this is the kind of thing we're mostly looking for if you choose to have this assignment. Because they're already working overtime shifts, as I mentioned. And so, this would be a voluntary kind of thing, which we couldn't expect it to be filled every night, you know, maybe one or two nights a week. Not really sure. Along with Southwest, potentially along with SAO flexible schedule here and there. So, there was, that's why it was kind of a collective menu here for-
But like, say a, say a 40-hour no-call car, let's say that, that may not be something that we can get from the Sheriff Department because of the staffing shortages? Is that what you're saying?
We absolutely could not get a, a new unit added to our deployment. What we would be dealing with is overtime that's periodically available and periodically filled with existing personnel. If, that's, that's the shortcoming. And I don't know how soon that's going to change. If it's a genuine shortage, then that might be a long time before more academies and more-
This point in time, if we wanted to, just, we just won the lottery yesterday and we wanted to put two more deputies, we're not going to get them.
Nope. And I verified that again prior to writing the staff report.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's contract cities in general. That's not just Bellflower.
Because it boils down to what we want to spend. As far as the diesel, when you look into that, you know, you may want to look in for when you get back the information, how long, when does it have to be fueled?
Sure.
You know, Public Works is going to be fueling it, I'm sure. But is it allowed, run for eight hours, 12 hours? I don't know. And then, and does, do people complain about the noise?
Right.
Yeah. That's what I can see. And then the smell is another thing, you know, and, but on that. And, but yeah, this is, this is a, a lot of information on a couple of pages that we asked for, and I really appreciate it. Now we see something. And I'm sure my colleagues, you know, understand what this is going to cost is when we decided to up the game here on our side. So, are you looking for direction of, of what kind of money in the budget? Or?
I would, I would say that the, we would need direction on, on further modifying Southwest contract if that was of interest. Would need to be somewhat specific on-
You don't have to make every decision tonight. These are your options before you.
I want to give Joel as much information as I can tonight.
Yeah. I think that we've, we're clear that we want to do more research on the trailers and-
Right. Yeah. We just do that. We want to get, get him, get him the ball to run with it.
Right.
So, let's, guys, let's, if there's no questions to staff.
Question, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the trailer, can you find out if we can, if there's a grant that we can use to buy this trailer? Like the quad, you know?
Uh, sure.
I remember the quad was, we use some grant money.
Yeah. I can definitely do the research to see if there's money available for equipment.
Okay.
It seems so frustrating these recent years. There seems to be money for things you don't want to do in, in the public safety arena. But we'll, we'll see if there's something we can actually-
Yeah. Okay. You can. Thank you.
Yeah. It's a good, good idea. So, let's start with, do we all have the, the flavor for Southwest Patrol?
And, and, uh, yes. And with the, I like what you said about having the armed.
Okay. Do we all agree armed?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a little more direction, right? That's what I'm trying to get you, though.
All right.
And I would also put in, make sure that we have weekend coverage.
Yeah. But I was, I was leaning to seven-day coverage, seven day a week.
Oh, seven? You want to go seven days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, let's just start it and see how effective it is, you know? Give it 90 days.
Well, and that's a good point, sir. You can start and finish with not much notice. So, this isn't-
It's not a lifetime commitment.
No, no, no. Heavens, it could be 90 days or 60 days or whatever.
What you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking about the cost, you know?
Well, it's a bargain compared to deputy.
No, no, no. There, there's not. And also not only that, because for the deputies, we're not sure if we're going to get the coverage anyway. We're not sure. If we, let's say, if we contract them for, let's say, eight hours a day, we're not sure we're going to get that every day.
Absolutely not. Right. I, I can say you won't. I'll just say you won't get it every day.
Yeah. So, I don't want to take, take the chance. I want coverage.
No. And, and this can guarantee.
Right. Exactly.
But if we get a seven-day, eight-hour car, 40 hours, so we're, we're looking at a seven days, at eight hours a day car, it's $130,000 a year.
$158 if you want it armed.
Oh, wait, no. I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's $129.
Wait a minute. Unarmed. Wait a minute.
$158.
No, it's $158. I'm sorry. Yeah. Looking at the wrong line.
And we, we can work with trying to fill our overtime car whenever it's possible. It, it's not an all or nothing. It's simply, wouldn't want you to think that's going to be full coverage. But we can, we can get what we can out of that strategy. In addition-
But would you think that as far as overtime car, we could get advanced staff one day a week?
Mm-hmm. And we already have some money in the budget that's not being used because they're using overtime, they're being forced to do so much overtime that they don't have the availability for ours. So, we have some funding for that that's already approved. It's just that we, if it's more than a, once or twice a week, we may need a little more money to help, help pay that toward the end.
One more, one more question. Is it sufficient to have one? Or would two be better?
One, one-
No, no, no. Two armed, two armed. Now, what I'm getting at is-
Oh, two in a car?
Sure. We-
Two people in a car.
What I'm getting at is two armed guards, let's say, three days a week, instead of one armed guard, seven days a week. Which one is more, which one is more effective?
I would suggest that you would have two cars that potentially work at the same time. And if they need each other, they can, they can get together to handle a situation. But in the absence of it, then they're getting way more, more coverage with two cars. And they, they'll be in communication and say, I got a guy over here. Come on over. Let's deal with him. Would be an approach that would probably be a safer-
So, so what I'm getting at is, let's say, given, let's say, if we give you the budget of $150,000 and you have the option of getting one armed guard, seven days a week, or two armed guards, three days a week, which one would, would be more effective to address all these issues that we laid out?
Well, hard to answer, but I think, I think if the key, I mean, that it, there's- Hard to answer, but I think I think if the key, I mean, it there's, let me back up, if the key is to be seen by the public. And that's satisfying to them to see people out there working, then. You know, the more coverage is. Better, if the key is to engage, in this case, illegal campers and people. Uh, loitering and these kinds of things, we're if we're finding that to be the issue at the evenings and at nights, which I'm hearing. Is, then you would want people to engage and that's a two man, a two person job is probably better for that kind of thing for safety and. So you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I hear you, because what I'm getting at is during the day, we have other coverage from, let's say, CSOs.
That's right.
They're out there.
I think.
So I'm more worried about the weekends and nights.
Yeah, evenings, evenings, nights, weekends.
So I'm proposing to you to look to consider three days a week with two armed guards at the same time.
Valid, valid, valid strategy.
It's an option, it's an option, so.
A good idea, a good idea.
It's more forceful, I think, because we're going to make a stronger statement that we have two roaming around at the same time and they're both armed.
And they could get together as needed to deal with a particular situation, just call the other one over, he comes and and then they can.
Gathering place.
Anyway, that's that's an idea.
So these are with with Sonny's idea, so there's. Two additional cars, three days a week. But they have radios, can they, and then we have other cars patrolling. The parks and whatever, I don't know if they'll be patrolling the same time as the others stuff, but it's.
Right, we we'd have to kind of take a step back and look at our whole thing, because like I say, we changed this use of them quite a bit over the last few years and that's really been. Interesting to see how well they flex, you know?
Schedules in the weekly out to the council so you know what he's doing, because I think there will be some tinkering on the numbers that go on.
Definitely tinkering, but but if there was one, like we were talking before, to one, say, seven day car. And there's other patrols in the area. They could be called on as backup too.
Sure. Yeah, they'll they'll call for help if they need it, I think part of what we were hoping is they wouldn't have to call often. If it's needed, then for sure, but they would be able to handle to conclusion, most of what they do, and they do a pretty good job of it.
Our existing patrol, they're all armed, right?
Mm-hmm, we have one, we have one unarmed, uh, having to do with the parking structure. But we've had armed for everything else when they're out at night, going to the parks and public buildings and so on, you know? And it wouldn't have to be three days, it could be. Four days, it could be any any combination, so we're not locked into any number of days and hours.
Is our discussion here, unless there's no more questions. You have enough to to come back and with like a a service menu of what's out, what we're doing now, to where we would deploy? Is that what you're looking, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think the the main thrust with this is.
Or you're just looking for the dollar amount, we give you a dollar amount, then you can figure out what to do.
I think that's a better.
That's what you're doing, the budget.
Because we're wanting to add more of them, more service, and if you're saying generally you want in the neighborhood of this much more service, that's. Kind of level of specificity we need, I think, to make.
How much is left over in the overtime account that we can use toward this?
Uh, eighty thousand?
So you would want to hold back thirty of that in case we need it and use fifty?
That's part of the tinkering, yeah.
Yeah, we don't know yet, yeah, but there is, some of this will be offset by that account.
Well, yeah, plus, well, we're asking is is to amend the budget, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, is what we're asking here tonight.
And another aspect to that is we have already been increasing behind the scenes with the parking structure and all that, so we're running out of money. For the existing Southwest deployment, so we really are going to need to up it just for what we're doing now, not even counting what.
So we can move on, so with with Sonny's idea with the two cards, cars, we all like that?
Yes, I think we're hearing the addition.
So to give you the numbers, an armed for seven days, not six days, is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
So it'll be a little bit lower than that with one day, so you want to go with that?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so we have, so you got authorization approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars for.
Well, and we want to look into the the trailer as well.
Well, yeah, that's just doing one item at a time.
Correct, okay, yeah, yeah.
And we'll increase the budget necessary to fulfill the rest of the year for Southwest if we want to continue with the parking structure. And the early morning bike trail and we're using them at night to do.
After the graffiti last weekend, we want to continue on the parking structure, I think, to actually increase coverage, at least for the time being. I think that will correct itself when Toronto opens and it gets used, but it's still a problem for us.
Yeah, much better.
Better, yeah, but it's still a problem, yeah.
All right, do we want a no call deputy in the minimum budget for that? Yes.
May I, may we recess for a restroom break? Real quick?
The young guy has to have go to the restroom, so we're going to recess for ten minutes. I'll let the record reflect that we are back in session after our health break. Okay, we. You got? A rough guess, a rough discussion of the Southwest Patrol deputy.
Sure, and if you're emphasizing weekends for three days, which you say, that's what I'm hearing, then the any overtime related to deputy coverage during the week. That would be an easier fill, so that's not, that's not a bad idea, Southwest becomes the weekend.
Oh, it's easier to get overtime during the week, got it for a deputy.
Work a double and that sort of thing. And and that'll just be as we can, based on. Variety of factors.
Right now, we're, we do over deputies with overtime out of our regular budget, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, and we'll have some money left over, because again, there's.
There is money left over.
They're strained with this other stuff that's forced on them.
And that overtime, is that a note, that's a no call, that's always been a no call?
It's flexible for whatever the department wants, council priorities, problems that are occurring, we did the overnight stakeout of some. Businesses recently related to catalytic converter theft, that was an overtime use. So it's flexible and it's not always at night, but sometimes it is.
Okay, do we want to authorize any more money for? Deputy overtime for a no call car?
My question is, what's that recommend, do we need it?
It's not a bad option to have, so, but I just don't know how often it'll be filled, so it's an awkward ask, quite honestly. We have some money already in the budget, we could just try to cover it that way and.
Why don't we use it for now and then if you need more, then you can come back to us?
Sure, the only other.
Trying to give them the discretion right now, so it makes it easier for them.
Sure, appreciate that, and the only other for sure item is we are going to need to increase our existing use of Southwest for the parking structure, we've been burning through it. Pretty fast, because we've had other calls for service, requests for service, early mornings, nighttime parking structure, so. Honestly, that could be a hundred thousand dollars.
Just for that?
Just for that, so two, two fifty would be the amount that would get us. All of the options plus.
So the one fifty already on the two cars, three days a week?
Correct.
And then you're looking over another hundred?
Just to cover ourselves for what.
Not just to break us even.
What we're doing now.
What you're doing now, right.
Like I say, we've really flexed them a lot, because. They are flexible and and as needs come up, we adjust. But unfortunately, it isn't, they're not volunteers.
And that overtime? Has been the deputy overtime has been going to the parking structure, because we changed?
No, we've just increased the service of Southwest in terms of going through our. Budget more quickly than we originally thought, because new needs come up and all of a sudden, we're using them to fill the need, so we're going to. We're going to need a budget amendment to keep that pace.
Keep that going, keep that pace, okay.
If.
We're burning through it.
If you wanted to cut back on it to, instead, that's another choice to make, but. They are utilized daytimes in the parks, nighttimes, public facilities and other locations. Parking structure is a lot of coverage at night, afternoons and night, actually.
Well, I'd like to see you get that backfilled, because you're projecting to spend more. But I don't know what the colleagues are, you see what he's what he's talking about?
He's asking for a hundred thousand dollars to backfill the overtime.
Other than that.
And I, so we at two fifty, and I think if that gives them the ability to. Use that money.
Okay, but that's just what we're doing, it's.
Right.
It's what we've been doing, it's nothing, nothing extra.
I know.
Do we want to do anything extra? Now's the time.
The excess is the one fifty.
One fifty is extra.
That's the extra.
Well, yeah, that there, but with a deputy though. Or the no call.
But my concern there is there's no body to do it, I mean.
There's no one body, there'll be people periodically that'll have some energy and say, I'm going to fill that car tonight.
Yeah.
You know?
One, what I'm hearing from the Sheriff's Department, things may be better off for them in six months, they see how their classes go, but. I think that's a risky proposition, because we're going to set expectations that we're not going to be able to fill. If we do that item right now, but I think it's worth revisiting and frankly, personally, it's the one I'd like to see most, if I knew we could fill it, right, I don't know we can.
Yeah, and I would think an overtime car is not the same as having a dedicated car, which the same deputy in it. Finds all the, knows where all the nooks and crannies, where the problem areas are, just because he's here every day, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you're getting different deputy.
Yeah, from the area that may not know the town.
And we we might only fill it one night a week or two nights and it's just, it's an unknown, but.
I see that, okay. Okay, want to talk about a trailer? To have Joel get back to us on.
I I think he's got enough direction already for the trailer, right?
We would research and and find out what's the best model and collection of features and make it happen.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just quickly. Uh, we kind of jumped over the special assignment deputies, you know, the SAOs and and.
Yeah, that's that's fiscally, that's neutral fiscally, we'll just theoretically, they'll assist any needs we're having or or. Uh, work late later into the night than maybe they would have otherwise to help with this.
Yeah, because because they're considered our best and and to have them on a. Some night shifts and and if weekends, you know, to help out, I think there's value there.
And they do that already, it's just this is part of, if we if we're wanting to make a new effort and extra effort, then. I'm sure we can get them to flex their schedule a little bit here and there and be part of the solution that you're looking for on more accountability in the evening.
I just want to reiterate that, yeah, thank you.
Okay, you got direction, uh, we don't need a roll call vote on this, do we?
The action, I'm going to have to come back in a future meeting with the budget and the recommendations.
It's coming back for the budget item, okay. Sure. Oh, look at here, we're down to the consent calendar, guys.
Yes, good.
Nice. Okay, any recusals or conflicts or any items you want pulled? Who's, who wants to go first? I think everybody's grabbing papers right now. Okay, let's start with recusals, Mr. Hamada, you got any recusals?
I'm good.
You're good, Sonny?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Coops?
No, I'm good.
You're good, and Mr. Sanchez, good, okay, anybody want any items pulled?
Hmm.
For discussion?
Sonny, don't let us down, you always have one.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney, does the mayor have to excuse, recuse himself, let's say, I want to pull item J.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm ready, I gotta.
Or just a comment? Does he have to leave the days?
So.
There's no question, just a comment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, obviously, my first caveat on all things with regard to a conflict. Is to remind the council that the conflicts are personal, so if the mayor believes that he needs to recuse himself, he can recuse himself. Legally speaking, the law is changing effective January first with regard to campaign contributions. Anything two hundred and fifty dollars or more after January first. Uh, if they was contributed to a campaign for a candidate, you now have a one year conflict. To answer your question, if it's just a comment without any action and he's announced his his conflict at the beginning of the consent calendar. I don't believe that he needs to leave the room if you're only making a comment.
All right, I just want to clarify that, okay, because he's conflicted on item fourteen, fourteen J.
Well, the mayor and I had a discussion about it ahead of time, so I.
If you're just going to say you like it?
If it's nothing substantive, I don't think that it, there's no harm, no foul there.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, I haven't yet, so yeah, that's right, yes.
Not yet, no, we're just, I was asking the question.
Thanks for reminding me, yeah, he was, he was getting permission from the city attorney.
Yeah, exactly.
And the city attorney concocted. An excuse. All right. Since there's no other, I'm the only one with a recusal and I do, I am going to recuse myself from fourteen J due to a property conflict within five hundred feet. Okay, Sonny is the only one that has a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I I just want to make a comment on item fourteen J and fourteen, um. What is that? The Lakewood. Fourteen J and um. Fourteen. Fourteen M. Uh, these are, I just want to let the the viewing public know that these are two major projects. Uh, that we are undertaking in the city of Bellflower, and this is about safety. One is the Bellflower Boulevard Improvement Project that will run from Artesia all the way to the Lakewood border. And we will add a median, a crosswalk, ADA upgrades, bike lanes. Uh, to basically improve the safety of pedestrians, both pedestrians and drivers. So I want to make sure that this is known to all people in Bellflower, the same thing in, the same thing on Lakewood Boulevard, there's going to be a major upgrade in terms of. Traffic signals, we're going to be putting two new signals, one on Cedar and Lakewood, and second one on on Lakewood and Main. And we will improve the, there'll be a protected lane, left and. Left and left turn lane on Somerset and Flower as they intersect Lakewood Boulevard. So that's going to add more safety, again, for drivers and pedestrians in that area. And also, there's be a major improvement in the crossack, in the cross, cross street of Lakewood Boulevard and along the Boulevard. Will be upgrading the traffic signal and roadway improvement, so there's going to be a lot of moving parts along Lakewood Boulevard. All the way from Cedar, all the way to Somerset in the coming months, so I just want you to be aware of that, and this is all about public safety. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, couldn't say it better than myself. Then I'll entertain a motion for the consent, consent calendar.
Move the consent.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Coops and a second by Councilmember Hamada. For the balance of the consent calendar with myself recused from fourteen J, without objection, that'll be the order. Council reports, Mr. Sanchez, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe I have too much to report, other than actually an idea. That came up to my mind, or came to my mind a little earlier when we were on item twelve C. And it's just a question, actually, for maybe for Beth, Ms. Corpus. Related to item twelve C, which is the. The introduction of the twenty twenty-two additions of California Building Codes and the entirety, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Um, one of the ideas that came to mind, we get a lot of graffiti, a lot of graffiti throughout our city, every weekend, four day weekends especially. Um, and the idea that came to mind is if we were to. Suggest a palette of colors like some cities do, between seven to ten different colors. Um, and basically, if the if the businesses complied with those colors, we would be able to match it when they get graffiti. Um, if they were to paint their businesses those colors, is that something that we could, would be a part of this? Is it something we would have have a conversation with this, is that even possible, Mr. City Attorney, he's already getting the mic ready, he's going to say, no, you're a crazy idea.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's certainly something that we can bring back for a future agenda item to discuss. It would not be part of the uniform codes, though, it would be part of the.
It would not be part of the uniform codes, though, it would be part of the nuisance abatement proceedings that we have in the code.
And perfect, that's why I'm asking, I just want to make sure I don't miss an opportunity to, to bring that up. You know, I think that, uh, you know, it's really, I mean, we all see it, our guys are good at covering up the graffiti, but at the end of the day, it starts looking very patchy everywhere, and so I just kind of figure out a solution, but now I know when to do it, thank you, sir. That's it, never mind, you have no que, no comments, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's it for now.
That's it. Mayor Proton, Santa Inez.
Oh, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of comments, um, I want to thank STAP and City Council for, um, the, uh, the very nice veterans event, it's a nice tribute to our veterans last, uh, last Wednesday, it was well-attended, and, um, I spoke with PJ already, uh, to suggest that you can reach out to more veterans, especially those living in Bellflower, I think we need to, we need to invite them, uh, to future events. And other than that, I wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Hamata.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just quickly here, I just want to report on the SCAG meetings, um, at the Transportation Committee Meeting, uh, the, uh, the topic of road charges has come back, um, it's still out, on the table out there. Again, road charges is all, uh, AKA, you know, driver usage, and, and this is intended to replace the gas tax. And so, it's, it's still being discussed, uh, about six years ago, uh, you know, California implemented a pilot program, and, uh, they came up with some, uh, results, and, uh, it's still on the table, and as somebody put it, there's still a lot more miles to deal with before something moves forward, so just wanted to mention that. Uh, at, at the Regional Council meeting, um, former Book of Assembly Speaker and, uh, Mayor of LA, Antonio Villarigosa, uh, was on the call, uh, he's the governor's appointment, uh, to be the, uh, State Advisor on Infrastructure. And, uh, uh, because of the budget that, uh, you know, California is looking at a one-point-two trillion-dollar budget on, on, on infrastructure, and that's with a T, uh, so, um, um, there's, uh, Mr. Villarigosa is trying to, uh, uh, go throughout the state to, uh, uh, have some, uh, more, uh, quality discussions on infrastructure improvements, and, uh, he's looking at streamlining, he's looking at breaking down the silos, and so, uh, uh, that's his role, and, uh, he's going to be, uh, uh, moving on it as quickly as possible, he'll be as, talking to as many cities and governments that he's, uh, uh, he's, he's able to, so, uh, just, uh, um, you know, just more FYI on that, um, uh, just, uh, you know, big budget items, you know, uh, bring, uh, bring a timeline that sometimes, uh, you know, we're not, uh, either we're not prepared for, or, or, uh, there's a lot of, uh, be it the environmental issues, of course, that's, that's, uh, gonna be something that's gonna be, uh, discussed, um, at quite, at some extent, so, uh, that's, uh, that's what happened at SCAG this month.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of two longtime local residents, and I'll start with, uh, William Bill Pendleton. Bill Pendleton was born in Phoenix, Arizona, on October second, nineteen forty-one, he passed away November five, two thousand twenty-two. In nineteen forty-three, when Bill was two years old, his parents decided to move to Bellflower on Center Streets, which is now Alondra Boulevard. Bill graduated from Bellflower High, graduated, uh, in nineteen fifty-nine, he later attended Serritos College. Shortly after high school, Bill married, raised two children, Cindy and Billy, in the Alondra Boulevard home. His first full-time job was a maintenance worker for the city of Bellflower. After a few years with the city, went to work for Southern California Edison, and as a lineman, and eventually a service crew foreman. He retired from Edison after thirty years of service. Bill was elected to Bellflower City Council nineteen eighty-four and served as mayor, he wanted to give back to the city he was raised in. He served in various boards, including the Noon Lines and the Bellflower Long Beach Elks. He enjoyed his hobbies, boating, water skiing, and traveling in his motorhome. Bill leaves behind a loving family, including his daughter Cindy, his son William, William Junior, partner Terry, former spouse Sally. As one of countless friends who benefited greatly from knowing Bill. Our sympathies, deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go to the entire Pendleton family. Bill Pendleton was a guy we always saw around town, he didn't have an enemy, he was always ready to help. Uh, he mentored, uh, Mr. Dutton and I on council work, and probably others that I don't know about, but just a real gentleman that, uh, we will certainly miss. Kind of guy that, uh, you never think is gonna leave you, because he's always so robust and always around, but, uh, he's gone to a better place. Uh, the second one is Nelvina, Ryler's Dam, and Nelvina lived in the house as you entered Bellflower on Artesia Boulevard, coming from Serritos, the first big house on the right-hand side, that's where she lived for a long, long time. She was born in Rock Valley, Iowa, on August twenty, nineteen thirty, and passed away on October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Nelvina spent the first ten years of her life in Rock Valley, before moving across the country to Bellflower in nineteen forty, where she attended Bellflower Christian School. While in high school, she met Corny, and, and the two married on January twelfth, nineteen fifty. Their son Cornell J was born in nineteen fifty-one, and daughter Doreen was followed in nineteen fifty-four. Nelvina enjoyed spending time with her family and participating in church activities. She taught Sunday School, participated in Ladies Aid, volunteered weekly at the Artesia Christian Home Auxiliary, and later, uh, volunteered at the Affordable Treasures Thrift Store here in Bellflower. She and her husband Corny also enjoyed traveling, both throughout America and throughout the world on bus trips and cruises. Nelvina was preceded in death by her husband Corny and her son Cornell, she leaves behind a loving family, which includes daughter Doreen and son-in-law Gary, five grandchildren, thirteen great-grandchildren, as well as countless friends. And again, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Ryler's Dam family. The Ryler's Dam family's been in the Bellflower, Corny, her husband, was actually born in a house where the McDonald's is on the corner of Downey and, uh, Artesia, so he was just a true native of Bellflower. His wife moved here in nineteen forty, and, uh, they raised a family here. Corny, of course, was a prominent, uh, real estate agent, and he's always served on the planning commission, tell you a side story, he never took his fifty-dollar stipend, he always gave that money back to pan, plant a tree here in Bellflower. So, many of the trees that are, you see today that are matured over the last twenty, thirty years, are part of the Ryler's Dam legacy. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, I just want to commend our Parks and Recreation Department for putting on a wonderful presentation for the Veterans Memorial. Um, it went very well, um, with, uh, and the caveat with the tiles that you can buy there in, in, in honor of a vet, uh, someone that served, or a banner that you see on the streetlight poles that, in honor of that, and, uh, just a wonderful day to, uh, stop and, uh, honor those who have served for our country. And with that, uh, I'm gonna call for adjournment in the memory of, uh, Nelvina Anita Ryler's Dam, and former mayor William Bill Pendleton. To the next regular meeting of Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-two, we're adjourned.